It started, and hopefully Commissioner Bradley will join. So, good evening, everybody, and I would like to bring the meeting of the April 18th of the San Carlos Plan Commission to order. And we can start with the pledge of allegiance. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey is absent this evening. Commissioner Yakapony?
Present.
And it looks like Commissioner Bradley still is not here, so I will make a note of that. Vice Chair Clements?
Present.
And Chair Ruth?
Present. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public comment, and public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements.
Apologize.
It's okay. I almost have it memorized. May briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. So, do we have anybody in the waiting room?
There are no callers at this time.
Let's see, I didn't catch, is that Sarah or Dara tonight? Do we have anybody in the waiting room?
It's Dara, and we don't have anyone in the waiting room.
Chair, I see Dara in the, there's an attendee, but I can't hear her. I don't see any hands.
Oh yeah, there she is, under the attendees.
Hello?
Allowed to talk about that.
Is there any way?
Dara? I've said talking permitted button.
Hello?
There she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
I think Dara, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Dara. There are no callers at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 4th meeting. Does anybody have comments on the minutes? I actually had one, and let me see the comment, get to the right spot here. Which is where it says, under the commissioner discussion, Chair Ruth said that it's very interesting architecture. I'd like to say in the, in the final sentence, it says, he said he feels it is a good deal for the city. And I would like to insert the point I was making, which is that to preserve the historical features. And then to continue with, ended this beautifully, well-maintained house.
Okay, staff took that down. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments on the minutes?
No, but I'd be happy to move approval.
Oh, thank you very much. I have a motion. Can I have a second?
A little second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing. And the public, the procedure for a public hearing is that staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation. Not sure that applies tonight. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This was the staff in preparing the minutes. And the item we have on the agenda for today is a planning commission recommendation to the city council regarding amendments to Title 18 zoning ordinance, Section 18.23.210 of the San Carlos Municipal Code to update the accessory dwelling unit, ADU, and junior accessory dwelling unit, JADU ordinance. Staff, would you like to start with the presentation?
Thank you. Good evening. Andrea Martisich, Principal Planner. This evening, staff will be presenting an item requesting the commission to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18.23.210 for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. As this is a proposed amendment to the zoning title, the planning commission is required to conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation on the proposed zoning amendments to the city council. Next slide, please. Just to give a little bit of background on the history of our ADU, JADU ordinance. In late 2020, the city council adopted ordinance 1566 to amend the zoning ordinance specific to ADUs accessory dwelling units and JDUs junior accessory dwelling units. And this was to make sure that our ordinance was in compliance with state law. At that time, as many of you will remember, there were several new laws, and it was, as a result, it was a pretty big overhaul in our AD ordinance at that time. So since then, staff has been applying the ordinance as adopted and has discovered several areas which were proposing for modification, which range, which range from clarifying our existing code as well as making a few modifications to remove some additional barriers that we've seen as a result of applying this over the last almost two years. Next slide, please. So in terms of the proposed changes, I'd like to start with the clarification items and what we're considering, sort of the more minor changes to the code. And there are three of those. The first is a recommendation to change the code to allow additions to existing non-conforming detached structures. The state law allows existing non-conforming detached structures to be converted to ADUs, as does our current code. However, the way that the code is currently written, it appears to prohibit adding on to those structures, even if that addition is conforming. And staff believes that this is something that could be clarified to allow these additions. Apart from ADUs, for example, on single-family residences, even if they're non-conforming, so long as an addition meets the current zoning standards, whatever those are, it would be permitted. So we are proposing to make that clear in the ADU code, that additions would be allowed as long as they conform to our current codes. The second clarification is specific to JDUs, and that is that JDUs can only be built within an existing area, meaning existing building area of a house or as part of a new house. An applicant may not propose an addition to a house and have that addition included JDU. This is something that we, as staff, clarified directly with HCD, because, you know, our interpretation of the code was that, you know, you should be able to do these additions. But HCD, and that's the State Department of Housing and Community Development, they were clear that this would not be permitted under state law. So our code is just clarifying that, because that has come up a few times as part of building permits. And then the third item, which again, we've been applying, but would like to explicitly say in the code, is that an attached second-floor ADU must comply with all house setbacks. So the setbacks for the main residence. And there is an exception that we're proposing this evening that I'll go over shortly. But apart from that, we would, we would want those to comply. Next slide, please. The next section of proposed changes has to do with windows, balconies, and openings. Specifically for JDUs, right now, the current code restricts the location of balconies and entrances and allows them, in certain situations, only for ingress and egress. What the proposed change would do was remove those restrictions that are on the first floor. These restrictions were put in place primarily to, you know, to monitor kind of the impact on neighbors on the second floor, and most of our first-floor applications, especially for JDUs, which are in existing buildings. If there's a deck facing a neighbor, as long as it's meeting setbacks, shouldn't have too big of an impact. So we wanted to remove the restriction that's currently there for first-floor JDUs. For ADUs, we also want to remove those restrictions for the first floor, again, understanding that, you know, for first floor, and normally with a fence separating properties, the location of entrances isn't as big of an impact. The, the bigger requirement that we're proposing to modify is remove a restriction that's in place currently for windows. And right now, our code says that if you have an ADU that faces the rear side property line, and there's a window within 10 feet of that side property line, you must have a five-foot windowsill as well as obscured glass, both. And our current code does not distinguish between first and second floor in, in terms of those requirements. Staff's proposal is to remove that requirement completely for the first floor, and then also remove it for the second floor, but allow the director to require it on a case-by-case basis, depending on the existing and proposed conditions. So really being able to take into account where the windows are located, what's on surrounding properties, and really tailor that requirement to a specific case and not, not apply it as a blanket requirement across the board. This would also help as well with ingress and egress requirements that are associated with windows and, and give staff a little bit more control to be, you know, specific to each site. Next slide, please. The third category has to do with reverse corner lots and setbacks. And you might recognize this picture from, I believe it was the end of last year, an appeal that came before the commission with regards to an ADU on a second floor. And so the lot on the right was the, the house that came forward for the appeal. And it's an example of a reverse corner lot. Next slide, please. So what is a reverse corner lot? It's, it's basically a corner lot where the rear of the lot abuts the side of another lot. And so per the zoning code, regardless of where a front door is located on a corner lot, the front is always, the front yard is for setback purposes, is always the narrower portion of that lot. And the rear yard is, is opposite of that. So in this example, the rear yard is that area that's in the red box. And what staff is proposing right now is to allow a second-floor ADU to have a five-foot setback at the rear yard. Right now, this is a 15-foot setback for any type of second floor, whether it's ADU or, or just the main residence. And again, this would be, this proposal would be for ADUs only to have that five-foot setback and only on these reverse corner lots. Next slide, please. And so I wanted to delve a little bit deeper into, into this request that, that we're asking for. We've received several inquiries, in addition to the appeal, for these, these types of ADUs, and consistently, there's been a couple of characteristics that are specific to these lots that we think are important to take into account and to allow for this reduced setback. So the first thing to consider is, as I mentioned, the rear yard of these reverse lots abuts the side yard of the neighboring lots. So in person, when you're looking at the lot, and I'll, I'll show that picture again in a moment, the rear yard of that corner lot actually appears as a side yard when it's in line with the house next door. The garages for reverse corner lots, not always, but generally speaking, are also in that rear yard area, even though they're accessed from the side street. And we've seen that for most of these corner lots, homeowners are wanting to build their ADU on top of their garage. There's several reasons for that. Mostly are, you know, just in terms of cost and aesthetics, as well as, again, this vision of, you know, having a side yard next to a side yard when you're looking at it in real life. The other characteristic or requirement, I should say, of these, of these lots that makes staff a little bit more comfortable with proposing this reduced setback is that any reverse corner lot, regardless of whether it's the main house or an ADU, has this additional required setback for a portion of the lot. And so this diagram here shows the required street side yard for the, the corner lot, which is that blue line, and that's generally speaking, seven and a half feet. But when you have a reverse corner lot that abuts another lot, so the, the one where you see the red line going across, that lot has, the reverse corner lot has to bring their setback in to match the front yard of the lot next door. And so with this additional requirement, that's, that's in place for all, all reversed corner lots. We'd end up with a resulting buildable area for the second unit of that, that green box. So even though we would be reducing the rear yard setback, it would, the AD would still be stepped in a bit and in line with the, the house next door, the front setback next door. Next slide. And so, looking at the picture again, it would generally speaking, allow for an addition kind of within that area of the red box. So as you can see here, even though the rear yard is, is where the garage is located, in person looking at it, it looks like kind of the two front yards of the houses next door. So that's definitely, I would say, the most substantial change that staff is recommending. And in meeting with, with applicants and homeowners, this really has been a challenge, also with, with this particular house as well, but the, the reverse corner lots, the setbacks have been a pretty big hindrance because of the 15-foot existing setback that is required. And so staff believes that this is something, you know, that would not apply to all lots, only to these reverse corner lots, and would be a substantial step in removing a barrier that's come up that we didn't anticipate as part of our first, our first ordinance that went through. Next slide. This item was noticed in the paper on April 7th, and we've received no comments in regard to it. In terms of next steps, if the planning commission chooses to recommend the city council introduce this item, we would take it on May 9th to city council for introduction, second reading on May 23rd, and it would be effective 30 days later on June 23rd. Next slide. This would be the motion, should you choose to recommend this item, and with that, I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there clarifying questions from the commissioners before we open for public comment? Well, oh.
Can you hear me?
Oh yes. Hello, Commissioner Bradley. We hear you. Do you?
Yes, I just wanted to know, I came in at 7:15. I had a lot of trouble getting through tonight. Sorry to, to interrupt. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm glad you, I'm glad you caught it. Thank you. And I think maybe we have a clarifying question from, from Vice Chair Clements?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I had a question for staff. What is a statewide exemption ADU?
Thank you. Yes, I should have clarified that. So a statewide exemption ADU is the minimum size ADU the city is required to approve per state law. So what that means in terms of our ADU ordinance is that sort of regardless of the requirements that are in our code, we have to allow each property to have, at a minimum, an 800-square-foot ADU with four-foot side setbacks, no taller than 16 feet in height. So regardless of any kind of other requirements we have, we have to allow that. So that could mean in certain instances that if there is absolutely no other way to design an ADU, for example, that meets the front setback, that we might have to allow, you know, a reduced front setback for that ADU to be built. The statewide exemption does not allow applicants to put it wherever they want. They have to demonstrate that they really cannot make, make it work with the current requirements.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. I had one more question, which is while you were amending the ordinance, I noticed one item that could have, in my mind, also been amended per a new state law this year, AB 345. So that's on packet page 16 2A at the top. The, that bill that was effective January 1st this year expands the ability for ADUs to be sold and now requires municipalities to allow them to be sold under certain circumstances. So that would also amend 2A. So I was wondering if y'all were aware of that new law, and if there was a reason that that also didn't get into the package?
Sure, I can go ahead and answer that, and then I'll, I'll ask Greg to just confirm what I'm saying, but no, I was not aware of that personally. So I, I believe, though, that that can be added into the ordinance, Greg, before going to council to reflect compliance with AB 345, I think you said.
Maybe.
I'm not, I'm not aware of the particulars of that law either, and it sounds like we would, we'd want to have the regulation allowing for sales and, and the circumstances that that is allowed clear and that, and that, and that we understand it. So it's possible we could add, I don't know if we could add it by the May 9th introduction. I mean legally, we could add it, but if, if we have a good handle on what that means. But I think, I think I'd like to make sure we understand what it means before, before adding it.
If I can use the chat, I'm going to put a link to the, to an article from BB&amp;K on the new law. It builds on a law from the previous year that enabled municipalities to allow somebody like a nonprofit that was, had a program basically to create ADUs and then convey them for homeownership purposes, for affordability purposes. And it didn't require municipalities to allow that. But this bill came along and basically amended the old, amended the, the new law and said, no, 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 cities really do need, they must allow for those, so.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a mandatory thing and, and you direct us to include it, I mean, we will make every effort to try and include it, but I, you know, I just, we want to make sure everybody on the commission understands what it means. That doesn't mean we can't bring it back as a separate standalone item as well in the future.
Right. I know state law keeps changing, and I was just hoping for your sake that you didn't have to do a new item and that you could do this, to this change conform.
It, it, it may be, and I'll look, I'll, I'll look at that article from, from BBK, and I'll, or, or something, whatever, whatever's out there on it.
It was 345 from last year, was effective January 1st this year.
Okay.
That's all I have here.
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like the, where, what situations that rule that you mentioned would apply might be limited somewhat. I mean, so I would like to understand. I think it'd be useful if, if we understood the broader context of the item.
And I would say that it is somewhat limited. It needs to be sponsored by a nonprofit, as an example. However, because our ordinance directly contradicts that language, you know, you don't want the public to not realize that that's possible. So anyway, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Yakapony?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, a couple of questions for Andrea, please. The, I'm sure, well, I'm going to say I'm sure you meant this, but let me just check. In the JADU, it has to go in an existing building, but that does not prevent a homeowner from converting, you know, let's say, 800 square foot of an existing home to a JADU and attaching an 800-square-foot addition provided it's within code, right?
And that, that's, that's a great question, and that's exactly why we reached out to HCD. So the, the law allows you to convert existing space for a JDU with 500 square feet maximum. You could then also do an addition compliant with the code in that maximum floor area that's not part of the JDU.
Right.
Or the addition could be an ADU, which you are allowed to do an addition for.
Got it. Okay. So homeowners do have options to JADU or ADU, take advantage of the new regulation zoning code, which allows, which encourages more housing. Again, limited in the case of the JADU to our, our code with regard to floor area. So good, that's, that's good to know. The, the five-foot setback in the reverse corner lot, if, if there was already like a seven-foot setback, does that mean that they could build a second story and kind of cantilever it up and push it right up against the five-foot line?
The way that it is written now, yes. So there's not a provision in the code now that it must be, you know, over existing garage or over existing floor area.
Well, hopefully that will be a non-issue, but it just struck me as it might look odd. If I could close a third question, maybe just for our information, since the zoning code was changed, how many JDUs and ADUs have we permitted?
So in the last year, there were, I believe, 43. And let me check, if you could give me one minute, I can check and see where we're at year-to-date so far. We are seeing quite a few of them, especially compared to before the ordinance change. I think before the ordinance change in 2020, we maybe had between like five and 10 on, on a good year. And so we've, we've really seen a big increase, which, which is great. But if, I will do a quick check on year-to-date. I know last year was 43.
Yeah, great. We can move the, move on, and you can share later. It's just, you know, did this change in code have positive impact? And 43 is a good starting number, so good to hear that. did this change in code have positive impact? And forty-three is a good starting number. So good to hear that. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before we open for public comment?
Yes, just to back up on a couple of commissioners' previous questions, if there's exemptions of the state law, can why I want to phrase this, can are there exemptions that the city may have from the state law? It seems redundant, doesn't it? What I'm what I'm thinking is maybe it's a nonstarter.
If I could, through the chair, if I could, I think I I might know what what you're asking. I'll I'll try to answer, but so this, so we, of course, comply with with state law and all those requirements. As I mentioned earlier, the the state exemption requirement, which requires us to allow a minimum eight hundred square foot unit, no taller than sixteen feet. That does not apply to our attached second story units. So if someone were to do an attached second story ADU, we do not have to allow that per state law. And and the reason for that is because it's taller than sixteen feet in height. And we've actually had conversations with HCD about that. So when we're talking about these reverse corner lots, this is something above and beyond what the state law requires. And even allowing them on a second floor of a of an existing or proposed house is beyond what the state law requires. And so that's sort of the, I guess, the exemption to what the state requires. I'm not sure if that answers your question, Commissioner Bradley.
Yes, thank you for being able to read my mind. Thanks.
Okay, let's let's open for public comment. Can I have the public comment? There we go. If you would like to make a public comment on agenda item six A zoning ordinance amendments regarding ADUs and JADUs, now is the time to speak. You can join the Zoom meeting at the link that was provided or call the number that was provided and and press, if you're on the phone, star nine and star six to unmute. And there's a two minute limit. And so Dara, do we have anyone in the waiting room?
There are no callers at this time.
Just waiting to see if anybody pops up. I see on the on the attendee list, Melinda Polley, is that a just want to make sure we don't miss somebody who wanted to call in. Well, I guess not. So I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
We'll move that we close public comment.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, in the planning commission deliberation stage, I was happy to see the that we put into zoning code reasonable rules for this for the particular situation of the reverse corner lots. As we all grappled with that, in that particular instance, it sounds like it's important. So it seemed appropriate to me. A few other comments, but as usual, I defer to my fellow commissioners first, and I I see Vice Chair Clements has raised your hand.
I'm happy to have you. Keep going, Chair, if you'd like to.
Well, I guess, I think the, you know, now there's a fifteen foot setback for a real rear yard. It took me a while to think through exactly what we're doing here. It doesn't make sense. And but with a fifteen setback in rear yard, that ordinarily makes perfect sense because rear yards are deeper than side yards. But but in reverse corner lots, the rear yard is like, it's kind of like a side yard. And so flipping to the side yard standard, in that case, five feet makes a lot of sense. So to me, it it's sort of applies sort of the same, the same standard to the reverse corner lots that that get applied everywhere else. It's sort of a, to me, it seems like a fair, a fair fair change. Now, other, I see Commissioner Vice Chair Clements, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, Chair. I was going to say what you just said, actually, which when Andrea explained the diagram, seeing it another time and perhaps in color, it made sense to me that the five foot setback matches the five foot side yard setback in that situation. And so that makes perfect sense to me. I wanted to, I guess, ask a question, which I guess I should have done earlier, which is about situations in which can the ADU go to the lot line or within the setback? You know, fifteen foot setback from the year, from the from the rear lot line is pretty big for small parcels. So I was just wondering if there are situations in which the ADU can go to the lot line and whether that is driven by state law. I I'm having a hard time discerning kind of what in the code is locally controlled versus what in the code is driven by state law. And glad to hear that the uptick was so noticeable with the changes. That's wonderful news.
Andrea, can you address that?
Absolutely. So in terms of going to the lot line, that would not be allowed unless it were conversion of an existing structure that had been permitted. So it would already be nonconforming. If it were a detached structure, it could be the state law allows you to convert legally nonconforming structures to ADU. So it would only be in the case of a conversion. Under our, under the state law, anything new, we have to allow at least a four foot setback. Or sorry, we have to, we can't require more than a four foot setback for the the less than sixteen feet foot tall ADUs. For the second floor ADUs, the way that we've proposed it is that you must have, if you're building a new second floor ADU, you must have a five foot setback. However, you're allowed to encroach into that under our current code with stairs only. So we would allow, well, we would, we say in the code, you cannot go closer than three feet. And anything between that five feet and three feet has to be ingress egress related. So you couldn't build the wall at three feet.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I think you just said that the state law says you can't require more than a four foot setback. The state law say anything about going to the lot line?
Uh, no, and my
That's in our control if we wanted to do that.
Correct. And I believe that would, you know, trigger definite building code requirements in terms of fire safety and all of that. But our current code, I don't believe, has any provisions for any structure to be at the lot line, even decks. You know, we're supposed to be
Except on, except not not for single family, but in
Correct, correct.
Multi make family mixed use, we can have zero.
Okay.
And commercial as well. We have several that are zero setback as well.
Got it. I was just wondering if, I mean, per my earlier comment, our lots are quite small and we usually have neighbors nearby. But in the case that, for instance, somebody backed to a creek or backed, you don't want to fall over. But I mean, like into the creek. But I mean, like, there may be situations in which the the neighbor to the back is quite far away where their house is is a very deep lot on the other side or something. And so I was wondering if we could have more leniency in that direction or to the sides, just on an exception basis, if nothing else. I know that's not the topic of tonight's edits. It's just my question as to how can we get this ordinance used even more and be more flexible and not really have a noise impact or a fire safety impact to worry about.
Would the normal processes for a variance, when was it applying for that sort of thing? One could ask for a variance and have to be approved.
And through the chair, just to address that briefly, the findings, as you know, to meet a variance are pretty difficult to meet. You have to show something, you know, specific about your lot. Right? And so I think, I mean, just from from listening to what Vice Chair Clements had to say, it sounds more like, it didn't sound like you were speaking about a variance process as much as a sort of a way to to allow it and and, you know, up to the property line in other instances. I don't know that a variance process was what you had in mind, since that is pretty difficult to meet. But I don't want to assume either.
Yeah, I don't know enough to know the right vehicle and whether a variance could also be defined as, you know, that you, for instance, you had the agreement of your backyard neighbor who had a house, so it was quite far away from the lot line and they didn't care. As an example, that the variance could pertain to not just your lot, but your lot's condition and its contiguous uses. It's a suggestion for perhaps a future amendment to the code. Because I know that ADUs are really quite popular in our area and it sounds like they're getting more so.
Okay, additional thoughts from planning commissioners?
Through the chair, this may be best answered by Greg, but if we allowed zero lot line, but then we require the next door that was abutting that property to make them have a larger setback, go from four to, say, ten.
Well, I, that's an interesting hypothetical. I I think we have to apply our zoning ordinances uniformly. So I I think that's because it's a generally a property right. So we'd have to be careful about how we draft that.
I I know that when Peter Calthorpe came out with the new village design, new urbanism, they called it decades ago now. They did a lot of design work on zero lot lines, but they wouldn't let, like in a commercial district, there's zero lot lines on both sides. But what he was doing was using smaller lots. Thus, you could build to the lot, to the lot line. Of course, they were tract houses too, so he signs both each of the the houses and the property. But that way you avoid long solid walls with no windows.
Well, it could be done by, it it could be done if it was part of a larger plan of a development in a subdivision where where you know, it's it's would be part of the zoning for that subdivision, like a planned development or you know, a larger development where, okay, that's part of the plan from the beginning. It's just once you start to have, if you have a zoning standard that if, you know, one house can have a zero setback and that the other house has to have ten, you have to have some good reasons for that. And but as as part of a plan, you can do it because that would be how they designed it. But as part, but as far as just putting a citywide ordinance that required that. I mean, there may be a way to draft it in a way that's that's fair and reasonable. Like, for example, the reverse of what you were suggesting, that if you're, if the house next door is more than ten feet from the line, you can have a smaller setback or something along those lines. But it does, but it does affect the other property's future potential. So it wouldn't have the same development potential. But anyways, kind of hypothetical at this point, but.
Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Chair Clements?
Sorry, one more question on that zero lot line point. And thank you for that further discussion. Are there other uses like a standalone garage that are allowed to go to the zero lot line? And is that a different situation than an ADU?
So for single family, no, there's a minimum three foot setback for detached garages and up to five feet, just depending on the the specifics of the lot. However, as Greg mentioned, in multifamily or mixed use, there might be an ability to have a zero foot setback for garages as part of a no larger development.
I was really thinking the single family context.
Yeah. So I'm no, three feet is the the minimum. But you, I'm sure you'll notice around the neighborhoods that a lot of them are right on the the property line, especially those that were built, you know, a while ago.
How did that get to occur then?
My understanding is just the age of them was before the the three foot setback requirement.
And what's the use of the three foot setback?
I believe it originated because of fire, fire codes and and having distances between structures. I know now that if you're, if you have an existing building within that three feet, three foot setback, that there are a lot of additional requirements you have to do for building for fire safety. But my understanding is that it originated because of of fire safety. But I don't know too much more beyond that.
Sorry. So it's just providing a little bit of buffer so the fire wouldn't spread quite so rapidly, but it's almost no buffer at all.
That that's my understanding.
And it's certainly not enough room to get any fire equipment really around necessarily. I mean, you can't get a fire truck in it through anything. No vehicle, obviously, getting through an access road or something. Maybe a hose. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Thank you, Chair. Just two quick things. This seems to me like sensible cleanup. And staff are always good at exercising level-headed and practical judgment. And so I'm supportive of the language proposed, particularly the it was helpful to see the red changes to the the specific code in the in the packet. And the second is just a small item on packet page twelve in the first recital, the second line, I think there's a parent F where it says units F. Maybe it's units of or anyway, just note that and before you submit it, check that.
Thank you. We can clean that up.
Any other comments? I guess my comment on the zero foot setback is that that would be a big issue. I would need to be nice to think about how how we can maximize the potential up for ADUs in our city. And that could be one of one of a number of items on the list. And then we'd have to weigh the pros and cons. In some neighbor, some some areas, it might be consistent with the neighborhood character and other areas. It might be a pretty big pretty big change. Nice, interesting thoughts, but I would register that I am like Vice Chair Clements, I think. I'm interested in maximizing the potential for ADUs. And so anything that the staff can do is they observe how these are, how the ADUs are being proposed and what's working well. And if there's room for expansions that that work for the city, let's hear about it.
Through the chair, I can I can add on a related note. Another thing staff is doing is meeting with various ADU architects and providers for to figure out a way to see if we can do like pre-approved ADUs. We're also researching other cities and their processes. San Jose being one of them who has a has a, you know, a set approval process for ADU to also help save some time as well. Separate from this ordinance, of course, but but we'll definitely be coming back with with some information on that as well. Separate from this ordinance, of course, but, but we'll definitely be coming back with, with some information on that as well.
Okay. Any additional thoughts from the commissioners before we consider the resolution? Could we have the resolution motion? Are we ready to to have the motion? Okay, entertain a motion.
Well, I will move that the planning commission adopted a resolution recommending the city council introduce an ordinance to amend San Carlos Municipal Code Section eighteen dot twenty-three dot two-ten accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units.
Second the motion.
Okay. Are we ready for a roll call?
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes.
Well, the next item on our agenda is item seven, reports, correspondence and general information. Starting with the first item, report on recent city council actions.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Ruth and Commissioners. Lisa, of course, Planning Manager. I did want to follow up on a previous email that I sent earlier. Or I guess it was towards sometime last week, maybe probably mid to late last week. I can't remember when I sent it, but it was definitely after the April eleventh city council meeting. And this is in regards to the council's decision. They adopted a resolution to return to in-person meetings. Starting out as a hybrid approach whereby the council would attend in person. However, the public would have the option to attend remotely. Our city clerk is working on to determine, you know, exactly how we do that from a technological standpoint in time for the main night city council meeting, when they will go into the council chambers for an in-person meeting. The city council did convey during their discussion on April 11th, that they did want the planning commission to follow the same procedures. So I did send an email out last week in regards to that. So far, I did receive an email back from Commissioner Garvey with a couple of questions. And I just wanted to invite the commission that if you had any questions or concerns on that, if you could please send them to me. That way I can package them up and share those with the city clerk so we can provide some responses to any questions you may have. There is a staff report associated with this, obviously. And I can certainly send that out to the commission. And I can put together, again, you know, any, any additional information that the commission would like to have in regards to this. I could also even see if there's a possibility to have perhaps this item come back and be on the May second agenda. But I would need to confirm attendance by other key city staff that would be most appropriate to help answer any questions from the commission. But I think the first step is really that if the commission has any questions about this, please send them to me. I will go ahead and send the April 11th staff report to the commission. So you can all have that, including the adopted resolution that goes along with that. Aside from that, I would like to turn the microphone over to Andrea Martisic to provide just a short update on the protected tree ordinance and where that stands.
Thank you, Lisa. So as you're aware, this planning commission recommended adoption of the new protected tree ordinance for city council that did go to council on April 11th. And the item was continued to account, to accommodate some proposed changes. Most of those changes have to do with the administrative guidelines and preferred tree list, some clarification, figures, things like that. However, the councils only, will only be adopting the ordinance itself. And the, the proposed changes to the ordinance included, there were four things that the council wanted to add. One was to clarify language to allow protected trees to be moved for development. So if someone were, wanted to move an existing tree somewhere else on the lot, you know, with a professional company who could do that, there would be language included for that. They wanted to include language to require a noticing for pruning permits as well, not just removal. They wanted to change the noticing timeline from 10 days to 14 days. And then they also asked to make sure that the city arborists had some discretion to change the, the size of the replacement trees specific to each lot. So those are changes that we are including and that will be going back to council on the 25th. And if introduced that evening, it would go for its second reading on May ninth.
I'd like to respond to Lisa on when we get back to city council chambers as a, as a planning commission. I strongly support, we do it as soon as possible. I believe that I'm also in favor of somehow citizens being able to sit at home and get on Zoom or however technically we end up doing it. But I think for the council and the commission, coming to city hall works best for us to work together. Thank you.
I guess on that note, I would appreciate the, the city staff, staff report that you mentioned, Lisa, that you couldn't, that you could distribute if you would, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Yes, I'll do that. And tomorrow morning, first thing.
And I don't know how, if there's opportunity for us to weigh in on it or if, or if we just follow what the city council tells us, but.
I think at this point, that would be good to weigh in, just so that we can be, you know, just, I mean, any comments, concerns, or what, how, whatever your reaction might be to that, to just please share it so that we can make sure that we are taking that into consideration as we figure out, you know, the best way to return and the format of the meetings. Again, this is something that a city clerk is working on right now to just, just kind of get the hybrid meeting into place. So we just, we anticipate there's going to be questions from our consultants, you know, from members of the public. So we're looking for some guidance on that. So I think to the extent that you have any comments or questions or anything that you might want to share, it's good information to have in advance so that we can kind of troubleshoot everything before we even step put into the room. So that it would be helpful.
And Lisa, you prefer that by email?
Yes, you can send that to me via email individually.
Thank you.
Are there any other report on city council actions before we move to the planning commission comments?
No other, no other, no other announcing.
Okay. I think we are already have, we were doing some planning commission comments there, but are there additional planning commission comments, reports?
Chair, I had a quick question I, about the council items. I've written down that the council on the 11th was supposed to determine members of the downtown advisory commission or committee. And just wanted to confirm if that happened and if there's a list of the members somewhere.
Yes. Thank you for that, Commissioner Clements. On April 11th, the city council also determined the composition of the, of a, of a downtown advisory committee that will be created and established for the downtown specific plan process. So what the committee will consist of is a member of each of the committees and commissions. So that will include a member from the planning commission, the youth advisory council, the economic development and advisory commission, the transportation circulation commission, for the parks and recreation and culture commission. We also want to have a representative, either this is an older adult or someone very active at the adult community center, someone representing special needs such as vision impairment or a disability. We have three at-large members. There will be two downtown property owners, two downtown business operators, property owners and then business operators. Someone representing the chamber of commerce and then two alternates as well, just in case. I mean, this is a two-year process. This committee would be meeting at minimum four times. But we do want to make sure that anyone interested in the committee knows that there is a potential, always a potential for an additional meeting if necessary. So while there's four that are scoped out in the project, there could be more. And so with the council's green light on the DTAC or the downtown advisory committee composition, staff currently working with the city clerk to begin the recruitment process. And we are aiming for a period between April 25th through May 25th. And then we would do council interviews sometime in early June in anticipation of a first DTAC meeting sometime maybe late June or early July. So I will go ahead and send the information to the commission as an informational item. But we will be, you know, announcing this through our regular protocols anytime the city does have an opening for a member on a commission or is doing some sort of recruitment for an ad hoc committee, you know, that is temporary, such as this one. And so we will be following those similar procedures and getting the announcements out, including providing the community with a little background and summary on the purpose of this committee, its role and, and what they will be looking at. So this is something that will be coming out in the very near future.
All right. Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Yes. And I apologize for the oversight on that one. That one is kind of big.
Yeah, no, it's an important process. Thanks.
Yes.
Additional planning commission comments or reports? Let's move on to correspondence.
Then this evening.
And planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
Um, I think, well, we will have our next meeting scheduled for May 2nd. Andrea, and are there any items that you're aware of that we can talk about on the May 2nd agenda?
Uh, no, I don't believe there's any for current.
Okay, okay. So I can follow up with the commission and let you know if we will. I think we do have a regular, well, we definitely have a regular meeting scheduled. But I need to double check and make sure whether there are items on the agenda for that, that particular evening.
Lisa, is the capital improvement that evening or is that a different capital improvement plan consistency?
I'll have to confirm. Got moved around, but it could be, that might be the one single item that we have on the May 2nd agenda. And I was, and I was remembering that it did seem kind of light, but I just need to confirm. So this would be a general plan consistency finding with the capital improvement projects that have been adopted by the city council. So this is required for us to bring those back to make sure that they're consistent with the general plan policies. That would be the one item on the agenda.
And if I could just add really quickly, I was able to count how many ADU permits have been issued, issued to date. And there have been 11 issued so far. That does not include other ones under review. Those are only issued in the last three and a half months.
Fifty-four is a pretty good number. So great to hear.
Can I ask for a quick staff update on the objective design standards workshop date in May?
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. So, so we have it scheduled for May 4th. It will be a virtual workshop. We're currently working on outreach. We're planning on sending a postcard to every residence in the city. So you should be getting that soon. In terms of the overall odds work over the next 18 months, we're, we're anticipating having three workshops overall. This first one is really to look at, you know, single-family neighborhoods and get an idea from residents and homeowners, you know, what they like, like about their neighborhoods, considerations, really kind of a focus on, on single units, ADUs, things like that. The second workshop, which we do not have a date for yet, will also include multifamily and mixed use projects. And then the third workshop will be returning to the community with draft objective design standards. So we wanted to start off with, with the single family and that will be May 4th. And again, it will be, it'll really be a focus and just, you know, gathering information from the community. It will be led by our consultant, MIG. And we're, we're looking forward to it. In the meantime, we're also doing stakeholder interviews with some of our architects and designers who do a lot of work within the city. And so that's underway as we speak as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any additional comments, reports?
None for this evening.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Andrea. We can adjourn our meeting.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.